Okay, so we're live. And I would ask you, unless you're speaking, go ahead and mute your mic. Because we've got a lot of people on the, you know, more than sometimes you get background noise that interrupts the conversation. Okay, so the first, the first issue is public hearing on the Chattahoochee Quarter Plan. And there'll be a vote on that one, so we all sound that community development?
Yes, we're all set. We do have two people signed up at this point to give public comment on that. It does appear that one of them may actually be looking to give public comments on any business at Johnson Ferry and not the specific item. But we do have two sign up at this point.
All right, well, if the speaker starts to wander off the topic, I will remind them that they can speak to the issue at hand, all right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have any questions about that one?
No, I'm good. I get to look at it. It's pretty standard.
Okay, all right. The second one is a public comment on, we're going to read out sixteen in four minutes each. Consent agenda. I'll start with you, Commissioner Cupid, on water system.
No questions.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
No questions.
Commissioner Burrow?
No questions.
Commissioner Rott?
Uh, no question.
All right, I'll stay with you, Commissioner Rott, for transportation, number seven.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any questions about that. I mean, basically what we're doing is we, instead of taking money from the Special Service District, we're using the CARES funds to fund it through December. Which will then free up the Special Service District to cover the shortfalls from the hotel motel tax.
Okay, all right. Any other commissioner have a comment on that one, number seven?
Um, I do. There is no dollar amount associated with this agenda item. Um, in last year's budget, it clearly stated that we only funded eight hundred thousand dollars of the circular out of the three dollar a night hotel motel. And then for my conversations with Bill Volkman, we had only then funded about another four hundred thousand out of the general fund, so I'm not comfortable having this as an open end a dollar amount. There needs to be a dollar amount assigned to it.
Okay, Bill Volkman, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, could you put a dollar amount in there?
Yeah, I can work with Erica. We can, we can put a dollar amount in it.
All right, make sure you stay in touch with Commissioner Gamble too on that one, all right?
Will do, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have a question on seven? Okay, let's go to Public Services, that's, um...
Chairman.
Chairman, real quick?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that you and Commissioner Gamble are okay with an amount not to exceed because if it comes in less because of service level drop offs or anything like that, I wanted to make sure that that would be sufficient with you, amount not to exceed. That, everybody comfortable with that?
I, I'm comfortable with that. I just, I don't like the way this agenda item is being put forth at this time.
All right, let's move on to, uh... Looking here, let's go through eight through twelve. Commissioner Cupid, eight through twelve, any questions?
No, I don't have any question. Well, yes, for Janine, for number eight. And I know that that's going to be a challenge on Election Day. Just curious to know if you feel that fifty dollars is adequate to retain poll workers?
Um, I checked with some other counties and what they were doing, and it was arranging between twenty-five and fifty dollars. So we went on the high end, being a metro county.
Okay, very good. How are things now? Have you had any challenges with people coming in for early voting?
Yes, it's quite challenging. A lot of people who have already applied for an absentee ballot are bringing it back in and waiting in line. So it's kind of, we did work on the front end, and now we're having to do work on this end as well.
Okay, very good. I'm supportive. Just want to make sure the support we provide is adequate.
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Cupid, on eight through twelve?
No.
Okay. Uh, actually, eight through thirteen, the county clerk's minutes. All right, Commissioner Burrow, eight through thirteen?
Yes, on number eight, um, Janine, that's just for June ninth, Election Day, not early voting?
That's correct. We're okay on early voting staffing. That's mainly people who are on Kronos and they're, they're workers that work on, in the office. And so it's only Election Day polling locations that we're having trouble staffing.
Okay, and Chairman, that's coming out of our CARES bucket for county under our Homeland Security and
Yes, ma'am.
Bucket, Jackie?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble, eight through thirteen?
Um, yes, on number eight, how does this fit the guidelines, um, for us to be able to reimburse this through the CARES Act? I mean, we have no proof that poll workers are going to have a direct contact with the COVID-19 patient. Um, so if, if we're not going to be spending these funds carefully and we get audited, this is going to have to come out of our general fund, which means it comes out of our reserves.
No, ma'am, this is a little bit different, Commissioner. This isn't hazard pay. It, it sounds like that's what you, you were thinking about in terms of, um, coming out of general fund. There is a section within the CARES Act that is specific to elections.
Can I, can you refer, can I have that, please, to review?
I can give it to you. I believe it's in your packet already, that, in the category, but I'll get it to you after the meeting. I don't have it in front of me. Also, the State Secretary of State's Office with elections also provides, um, some provisions for, um, what we're experiencing as related to elections as a result of COVID-19. So this is just getting her the funds quicker through our CARES Act funding, but there may be some state funding coming a little bit later on to, Janine, you might want to speak to that, having, uh, direct contact with, um, Roethlisberger's office.
Um, at this point, all we've been told about is CARES Act reimbursements for PPE, which we have already utilized that grant, and for the drop boxes, which we have also applied for that as well.
Can you see it, did you see? It's four hundred thousand, uh, can you pass me the, four hundred million, I believe, right?
Do you want me to say?
Four hundred million, sorry.
Four hundred million, sorry. Four hundred million for election?
Four hundred million on my category.
Okay, so we, there is a section right here that says four hundred million, uh, Independent Agencies Elections Assistant Commission Election Securities Grant. And it's to prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus domestically and internationally for the 2020 election.
I can, I'll screenshot it.
Uh, uh, she has this, you all should have this packet here that we put together, but I will get it to you, Commissioner, right after the meeting, okay?
Okay, thank you, Jackie. I still don't see how, um, giving our poll workers another fifty dollars is preparing, preparing to deal with COVID-19. Again, um, and then you go back to the CDC guidelines. You know, they're not going to be in contact within six feet of that person for more than fifteen minutes, and there are other guidelines that we need to be looking at. I just, you know, I had a lot of emails and phone calls, um, from unhappy staff that we were considering this for the election workers, and if we consider it for June ninth, well, it's not going to say that the, the workers that are currently working aren't going to want it every day. And again, I question if this is truly comparable under the hundred and thirty-two million CARES or if we're going to be having to take this out of our general fund.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Okay, Commissioner Rott, heading on eight through, uh, on eight through thirteen?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
No, I've already commented.
All right, so I think we have it at eight through thirteen. All right, let's go on to, uh, number fourteen, and I'll start with, uh, I'll stick with Commissioner Burrow on fourteen.
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
Um, yes, again, I had a lot of emails over the weekend on this. Um, one email that I found interesting was from Ron Siphon that was dated, uh, May twenty-third, which was Friday. And, um, my question is, is how did he get the list but other constituents weren't able to get the list?
I can't answer that, Commissioner. From my standpoint, I don't know how Ron would have gotten the list. I don't know.
Okay, because, um, you know, there's, there was a lot of questions going out as far as, you know, why Ron Siphon was able to see this SLOST list, yet it wasn't anywhere on our website for constituents to review prior to our vote today. Um, so there was a lot of questions and concern on that. Also, I'm concerned that we don't have the Sheriff's Department adly, um, covered on the 2022 SLOST. Um, we, we need to seriously relook at that. Uh, we don't even have funding in there for their replacement vehicles. Um, the other question I had is the million dollars to the Vet, Veterans Memorial. Um, I know Commissioner Burrow answered some questions on that. When we had this last May, and we did the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to them, we were told that this was going to be constructed by November of this year. Obviously, with COVID, that's not going to happen, but this should be constructed prior to starting to collect on the 2022 SLOST. So again, I ask, why do we have the funding in there?
Um, I'll be happy to answer that when you're done, Kelly.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Burrow.
Um, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was for the foundation budget, which is a nonprofit facility that will be constructed, is on county property, and will be a county facility. Um, park, so to speak. Um, a memorial to the veterans, and it will be a county-owned and on-county property. The SLOST item, a million dollars, is for the, towards the construction of the building, the memorial itself, which is perfectly legal under SLOST. It's a county facility. So the money that the foundation is raising is for design, marketing, all the, all the stuff around the construction and, and the monument itself. So that's why it's on the SLOST, but, um, it's, it's, they're projecting three and a half to four million dollars to build it. So this is a, um, a million dollars toward the construction of a facility that will be a county-owned um, facility on county property.
And I understand that, however, we were also told that this would be constructed by November of 2020, which means the monument would have been paid for, construction costs would have been paid for. That's why I find it very interesting we've got a million dollars here. Now, I understand we haven't gotten our quarterly updates like we were supposed to. I also understand Don Arrova is going to come in and meet with me personally, but because of the COVID, hasn't. But still, to me, it's very interesting to have this million dollars in here to go towards construction of a building that we were told a year ago would be completed in 2020. So...
Well, first of all, a lot of stuff has been delayed and put off, um, not just because of COVID-19, but, um, also, our county attorney's office is working with their attorney to, to, um, draft a memorandum of agreement for this facility that will come back to the board for approval. And that's still being worked on.
Okay, but it sounds like the two hundred and fifty thousand that we gave to them to contract Carter, Carter's not coming through in fundraising the three and a half to four million dollars that they need. I mean, that, that's what this is telling me, correct?
They have been working with Carter. Um, Carter has made some suggestions that they're working on now as far as fundraising, and, um, everything's been put on hold because they can't really do anything as far as a gala or a fundraising event at this time. So the, the groundbreaking and the construction and all that has been put on hold for now. Until we can get an agreement as well. Okay, but it is a county facility, a county building, and a county-owned and on our property memorial at the Civic Center and a Central Athletic Center. It's in that complex.
Right, but it was never put out that the, the, the county would be funding the four, the four million dollars for cons, for construction. I mean, I understand you want to put a million towards it for SLOST, but that has never been discussed prior to this coming forward.
We're not funding the four million. They're raising money. The million dollars is a contribution towards that construction as a, a SLOST project. They're still on track for fundraising as soon as they can. They, they can't do anything right now. We had an event scheduled in June at the Civic Center, and that had to be postponed. So...
All right, I think, I think the question's been answered. I mean, I'm not saying they agree, but I understand, but I believe the question's been answered. And Commissioner Gamble, uh, Mr. Siphon had ordered, asked for that list, and I told him that as soon as it was published, uh, in the agenda book, I would send the list. That's how we got the list on Friday.
Okay, then I would just ask that if, if, you know, we're going to say it's in the agenda, then we have to make it available to all constituents?
It is.
No, this was not on the website. People could not download SLOST list on the website. Commissioner Gamble, cover.
Commissioner Gamble, this is Pam, and I republished the agenda on Friday to the public, and that included the under separate cover document, which was the SLOST list. So it has been up on our county website since about ten forty AM on Friday.
Okay, because I was being told people could not find it. So not sure what's going on there. Um, but still, I think we need to have the discussion on the sheriff's office because we are not adequately funding them in the SLOST.
Well, I believe you saw my answer to the sheriff, that I, I understand the consensus, and that we have other funding, funding meetings to, uh, progress his issues. But, um, you know, the list is, the list stands as what it is. You can support it or not. It's, um, that's, that's future at hand here, because I don't believe there's any, uh... Oh, I'll wait for the commissioner to leave on the list before we come back to you on that question, okay?
Okay, so I guess this means that when we see the budget come out in June, July, we're going to see another four to five million dollars being added to the sheriff's budget to start addressing the needs that he has to cover going forward, since we're not going to be covering him in the SLOST.
There's no requirement to fund the sheriff's issues in one year, Commissioner. We can spread them out over time.
Well, he, he needs twenty-six, twenty-eight million dollars. Again, that's, that was just to maintain the jail. We're not including the two million dollars that the police and, um, everybody else gets to for their vehicle replacement. So if you divide that over the next six, seven years, it comes out to about four million dollars a year that we need to be funding him.
Okay, all right, well, your math is accurate. As I said, there's other things that, the funding streams that can address his issues, and I'm confident we'll find a way to do that. So, uh, you're still just on the floor on the SLOST, on, on the number fourteen, Commissioner Gamble?
I have no more questions on fourteen.
Hey, Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have questions, but just a point of clarification. And the SLOST list for district four has listed a number of parks for them to have investment without stating specifically, um, what those investments were. And that was purposefully, um, as my experience has been with this current SLOST, that over time, the needs of a park may change. And one thing I did appreciate is parks taking time to meet with the community to draft the things that they would like to see, and that was determined through consensus with the community, and then it was voted on by the board. So I like that process. It provides some flexibility for who will be in this position when the SLOST is being determined, and it allows them to be responsive to matters that can arise as the SLOST program is ongoing. So I just wanted to provide that point of clarification.
Yeah, well, you're being way too humble, Commissioner, because you also had a hand in that. The, the list is also a product of your leadership, and I hope that this, well, I'm confident this will, uh, really bring, uh, enhance the equality of life for, for district four.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, um, there have been some comments too about the Community Impact, um, Project List for, for the districts. Um, I've addressed the Veterans Memorial. The, um, I don't know how specific to get with, um, for instance, repurposing Shaw Park. That park has really, um, its use has expired as far as what's there now. And, um, the community is what would like to see, um, other things besides the ball fields that are pretty much unused right now. So we're working with Parks and Rec to come up with a design if the SLOST passes, but, um, we, we know that we need to change some things around there because it has no more use, um, at the condition it's in right now. So we're looking at, um, additional pickleball courts. We're looking at, um, revitalizing the, the community center that's in the back of Shaw Park. Uh, Gritters Library is also on the footprint of Shaw Park inside the complex. And it is on this SLOST, the sixteen SLOST for renovation and expansion, and, um, it would be included in repurposing as well. So until, um, until we have land in place to, to redesign or repurpose Shaw Park, that's kind of why it's being left open as Repurpose Shaw Park, if that makes sense. And then Ebenezer Park is one of the new parks in the district that was purchased with the Parks Bond money in two thousand and seventeen. So that's on the list so that we can develop it. We do have an approved master plan for Ebenezer dams, and, um, that's the, um, amount for that is to develop that according to the master plan that has been approved.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so, so that's...
Commissioner Rott?
Yeah, Commissioner Rott?
Sure, I was, I was looking at my, my list here, and there was my last one.
All right, so, um, I got a couple, couple comments, a couple questions. On the, um, on the Public Safety Agency in Tier One, um, there is a separate category for sixteen million dollars for eight hundred megahertz, which I understand, you know, that's an ongoing issue, but further down under, um, county-wide projects, we have eight hundred megahertz listed again. Why are they not together?
Randy, you want to talk a little bit about that? One of them is mobile, the mobile radios, and the other is towers.
Yeah, but why would we not, I mean, it's all eight hundred megahertz. Why are we, why would we need to break it out?
Well, even in the, in the past SLOST, we've kept them separate because, um...
Keep it cleaner mainly.
Well, to keep it cleaner, yeah, what Randy is saying is that you have towers at eight hundred megahertz, but then we also buy the radios for, um, for the officers to use them, so they're two different things. One is more of a capital, and the other one is more of the hand-use, smaller capital projects within the SLOST.
Right, I understand that, but I'm, I guess my question is, you know, we have, um, Public Safety Agency. You could have under eight hundred megahertz. You could have the first one that says all radio equipment replacement, and then the second line would be the tower. I mean, you're still keeping it separate. It's just, it, it seems strange to me that you would have eight hundred megahertz in two different places. I mean, you know, it's, if it's all county-wide, then just, to me, it just makes more sense to have it all in one place. So just...
We don't buy the mobiles for the cities, though, do we? So the reason the, the towers are county-wide is because that provides, uh, service for all of our cities. The mobiles are just for cop county, not the city. So if you put them as county-wide, that would be somewhat disingenuous, because it's not a county-wide, the mobile.
Okay, all right. Um, my other comment is, I had an email about TRIT. And it's, it's under the Community Impact. I mean, the, the money is there to buy the property. So if we need to clarify and just put on there that, uh, where it says TRIT, um, puts the purchase of property, that would make it very clear what the money's for. Um, and finally, and I talked to the county manager about this this morning, um, I have one, um, change request. The CID has asked to swap out. Um, it's a Tier One project, which it's an improved, um, order improvement to address I-285 express lanes traffic. Move that to Tier Two, and they would like to move up the Cumberland Core Loop segments A and C. And I, I know Erica is familiar with that, so she can tell you more about it.
So those, those are actually on our federal, state, local, um, list.
Okay, you got to move closer to the mic.
Sorry. So that, those are, those are included on our federal, state, local candidate list, um, which is not, it's not attached to the list that you're adopting potentially this afternoon. So all we have listed right now is the forty-six million, the twenty-five million, but we can definitely make, make clarifications on that, that federal, state, local list.
Okay, so we can make that change?
We can.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
On the SLOST. Um, this is, this vote on this SLOST list, first of all, this is to put it to a referendum, correct?
Correct. This, this list will be associated with the referendum.
So with the town... So with the town halls, the virtual town halls, or however we're going to do the town halls because they were interrupted with COVID-19 in the next few months, there'll be opportunities to amend this list before it goes unvalid, correct? So this is the final list to go to the...
That's correct.
Cities go to the IGA when they pass to that. This is the list that we could use.
Bill, you're coming in broken. Everybody can understand.
Yeah, say that again.
No. This is the list that's modifying the list from your vote today. Not modifications from the list beyond this point. This is what's included in the IGA. Cities will be approved. So you have to approve the list, then they approve the IGA, and it's approved to notify elections. It's all part of the process. There's no modifications or adding to the list after.
Okay, then will the language that will be on the referendum be determined by the board?
Yeah, at a later time. This is the list today. And then the book that we've always prepared related to the SLOST will add additional details to these projects.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, I thank all the commissioners for all the hard work on this agenda item. All right, let's go on to number 15. Commissioner Ott?
With the list.
I'm sorry? You okay? All right. Commissioner Burrell?
You know, I know there's been some comments about certain parts of it. I mean, this is just kind of, you know, setting up the list before any money is spent. The board's going to have to decide if any money is allocated to a particular category.
That's correct. Yeah, this is categories. And again, I try to emphasize, just because the categories are approved, that does not mean that a program that's submitted under those categories is automatically approved. That is not the case. Every program has to be approved by the board. So there's not any assumption or presumption that because you meet the category that you're going to get the funding. That is simply not the case. So Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, um, since we've had a lot of requests outside of county jurisdiction, for lack of a better word, some state agencies that will receive funding, and we don't know yet what that funding will be for them. Instead of doing, uh... My question is, like, for the Department of Education, that's for the school assistance program. Why wouldn't we do one category for all the requests that we're receiving to be considered? Doesn't mean we're going to automatically fund them, but we're getting a lot of requests from outside agencies that aren't county. They're, you know, funded by the state or other sources. And we don't know what they're getting from the state yet until the legislature goes back into session. So why wouldn't we do one category for other requests, outside requests, to be considered?
Okay, Dr. Mabors, would you explain the process to how you arrived at these categories?
So when we work with Holland and Knight, they asked us to look at, what are your needs? What are you hearing from people within the community for funding? So we came up with about four broad categories initially to include the county and food assistance, shelter, small business assistance, and job training. When all of, putting all of this together, we did start to receive Commissioner Burrell's requests from school systems, from Department of Public Health, our own elections, and just various categories of asks. So what we wanted to do was just provide you, the board, with all of those requests that we have received, even from the cities. So we put the cities and public health under the county, so they are in our broad category. But we wanted you to have the opportunity to discuss whether or not you wanted education and other requests on here. If the board so chooses to have an other category for state agencies for consideration, we can do that. That is not a problem. At any point in time, we can change that. But that's how we arrived at these, at these categories. Because we knew that if we could help stand up small businesses, for example, that would assist with the request for food and evictions and sheltering. So small businesses came up because we felt like that was so important to the county. We thought about food. We said evictions anyway. Education, public health, again, it's all reimbursable. We are all asking them to provide for us any information that they have about future funding from the state. If you've already received money from state agencies, we've asked about that as well, and they are to provide that. But again, if the board wants to do those four categories that we talked about, and then do an other category for catch-all, that's up to you all. We'll do that. But this just encapsulated what we had received to date.
Okay, so the cities, for example, or in public health, they're, even though they're not under the county jurisdiction, that will be coming out of our Homeland Security Disaster Relief bucket?
Yes, ma'am.
Of 132 million?
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't the schools come out of that too if we decide to fund that?
No.
Do they have to be separate? Okay.
They wouldn't come out of the Homeland Security line item. If you go back to the spreadsheet that's here with you, there's a section on education. Right.
But it's a state agency.
Yes, ma'am.
It's too, but they're coming out under us. So it's fine if we leave it like this. It's just, everything has to come back to us to be considered.
Yes, ma'am.
And so far, all the requests received from other agencies outside of our direct jurisdiction are covered under either our Homeland Security Relief or something else on here?
Yes, ma'am. And when we, if it's a contingency, something that we haven't foreseen, or we feel that we, you know, expended those funds that are Homeland Security-related to the county, we'll come back and say, we want to take this out of the county contingency. But we bring it all back to you. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Now, we've also asked, you know, like, public health to scrub their list and, you know, bring it back because we're really double-checking to make sure that, you know, we can provide the funding for all of the requests. So some of the requests have been, put everything in there in the kitchen sink, and we're having to go back and say, okay, this is or is not covered. And we'll take this, but we can't really support this. So when it comes back to you, we hopefully will have all your questions answered from those agencies that are asking for this money.
Are you good, Commissioner Burrell? Have I lost her? Or have I lost myself?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Gamble?
My only comment is, Bill, can we start itemizing out the budget and expended like we do on the SLOST items in here? So that we can start keeping track of, you know, what's already been allocated and what we have left?
Yes, Commissioner. Once we assign the categories and then put budget dollar amounts to each category, then we'll have a, basically, this is how much you budgeted, this is how much you spent, this is how much you have remaining by each category. So this is kind of step one. And the next part, to your point exactly, is putting dollar amounts with the categories at the border.
Okay, because I noticed, you know, within here, you know, you noticed that we had done the $1,065. But I just wanted to make sure we were going to start, you know, once we get the dollar amounts, we start doing that as a regular.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions, Commissioner Gamble? Okay, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, my questions or concerns piggyback off of those stated by Commissioner Burrell, and we're interested in with Commissioner Gamble's question to see dollar amounts assigned. I have a lot of concern about us continuing to get enrolling requests from different organizations without us ever having made a broad statement that people can submit their requests for consideration so that we can consider all of these things in full as we determine the amounts for each category. Or so we can determine if additional categories need to be added. And the following agenda items, particularly the one for small businesses, we could potentially be dedicating 40% of our CARES Act funding without doing the process that Bill Volkman shared, which was to assign dollar amounts to each category. I think we're doing this backwards, in a sense, without having that financial framework in place. And I think we're doing this in a way that has not really ushered in openness to all of the cities, all of the organizations in Cobb, whether they be nonprofit, whether they be other business-oriented organizations. We have not communicated broadly what we're doing with respect to these things. And I think this kind of gets back to some concern that I had initially with the amount that we dedicated for food distribution, where our organization was invited to provide a presentation. And even some background rumblings about why this organization versus other organizations. At the end of the day, I think some organizations saw that this was such a pressing need that they were all willing to work together to find the outcome, to make sure that people were getting fed in Cobb. Here, though, I'm just very concerned, I'm extremely concerned and troubled about us making decisions on rolling requests and seeing some honored, seeing some not honored, seeing some in our agenda book. Again, both not having the financial framework and then an open call for people to provide submissions to the commissioner so that we can weigh all of these things in entirety. I do recognize that this agenda item is listed to be a start or a first go at all the categories. And so that does kind of lessen some concern. But then it opens up the door for additional concerns because the next time we meet, we will continue to get more requests, and we may continue to see things hop on our agenda that may continue to take additional significant funds out of the CARES Act without us coming together and having consensus among the board about how to fund each additional category, each category that's listed and each additional category. So number 15 in itself is not as troubling as the impact that our lack of having a roadmap is causing. And I will express this when we address the additional agenda items. And I recognize, again, the need to put something out to the public to let them know what's going to be done. But then that gets to a third point with agenda item number 15. It's just a sense of clarity. Putting these categories here means very little to those who are used to dealing with county government. How does Department of Homeland Security relate to what we do as a county and to requests coming in? So does Department of Homeland Security, does that pertain to certain organizations that have a question upon the Department of Homeland Security? Somehow, this has got to be relatable, to be understood, to those who are used to dealing with county government. And even as Commissioner Burrell's asking questions, I'm having questions too. Because we can't say refer to a document that I gave you via email when everything that should be listed in this agenda item to allow the public to make an informed opinion should be in this agenda item. This is not clear. This does not, to me, show how this relates to how we operate. It does not show a framework, and this process lacks openness. And in that respect, it's going to lack transparency, even though we think we're gaining transparency by this item. I think this item is just going to cause confusion. Until we sit down together, have that work session that Commissioner Gamble has suggested, where we come together, I thought we were working towards this. He said, anybody who had a request, let them come into a work session. Let's talk about this. I still think that's overdue. And I think that could be really helpful in guiding us in how we move forward. Until we do that, I'm seeing this agenda item and the next two to be premature. I see them to be causing a lot of challenges. And I think these are things that we should correct soon. We should buckle down and work hard as a board in the next couple of weeks to determine how we can better move forward to provide openness, clarity, and opportunity for people to weigh in and for this board to be able to make a better informed decision on the categories and on those who should be getting funding in the categories.
Okay, well, I appreciate where you're coming from, Commissioner Cupid. I share a lot of your same concerns. But I think that one of the reasons we brought this form in this form is that we did, at least from my understanding, at least for a week and not longer, tried to put money into these categories, and there was just no consensus by the board. Let me finish.
Okay.
Finish. So, you know, the bottom line here is that as the chairman, I have to take a look at all four of the commissioners and try to get a sense, also be very cognizant of the very difficult circumstances that we're in. And imperfect as this agenda item may be, we need to move forward on it. I said very early in the process, when the federal government gave us this kind of money, you know, it was going to create problems for the board because it asks us to do things that were portioned against the government that we don't oversee. For instance, public health and education, but those are covered by the CARES Act. So we would probably have to have a work session every single day, and I'm willing to do that.
So am I. I think the whole board is. So I think it's worth it for us to be inclusive because that's what we're going to run the risk of being a follow-up, is not being inclusive to those that have legitimate need in response to COVID-19. And because they don't have relationships with certain people on the board, their interest and their issues are not getting buoyed to be included in this document. I reached out to commissioners of other counties in the metro Atlanta area to figure out what they're doing. And I have concern when I see that they have budgets in place and a roadmap of how they're going to spend their money, and we are making significant decisions, and we don't have that in place. I have full confidence, I have full confidence in our board that we are capable and able to come and sit and talk through these things. And this is not a new thing I'm sharing. Again, this has been brought to our attention, that this was a desire of at least one commissioner. And I think, I know, I echoed her sentiments for us to do this. I think those that need the funding and want to help the community, they're willing to do this. So, I mean, that's one concern I have. Another concern I have is this is a public health epidemic. I need to know, when I see these things, what are we doing to get back on track when it comes to testing and when it comes to tracing? Because to me, these are things that give us confidence to move forward on everything else. And I'm not seeing that bubbled up in these categories, or if they are, help me, help me to see that. So I know that we are getting towards the root issue of why we're in this pandemic in the first place. I think our CARES Act, you know, we have it listed here. It doesn't get to the hazard pay that's been on the table from two weeks ago. I'm truly at a loss. I'm concerned. We have a lot of money, but it's one thing to do it because we need to do it, and it's another thing to do it right. I think we should, and I think we have a... I think we should, and I think we have an opportunity and a willingness for us to get this right.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comments. All right, with that, let's go on to um, number sixteen, Commissioner Otte.
Chairman, um, you know, we had a lot of discussion about the food and this is to kind of address some of the concerns I just heard. And we were told that we needed to act on the food. We weren't told that we had to create categories. We were just told that we needed to act on the food. And the chamber and I worked long and hard listening to the commissioner comments. And all of them except one reached out to me and gave me their comments on this proposal ahead of time and changes have been made. And I think that, you know, if, if we wait too long, it's not going to matter how much money we put towards businesses because they're not going to be there. They are struggling now with the money that's designed from the federal government to help these businesses, to get people back to work and to keep these businesses. Majority of um, people in the county work at a small business and so we need to kind of get them in place. Um, almost half of the committee that's proposed would be either county appointed or county um, employees. And so I think this is the right thing to do, it's um, to move forward. I know Commissioner Burrow had a question about whether or not the committee members to vote on their own business and the answer is no, um, it's not in the MOU. And I think Dana answered your question about that yes, they would have to recuse themselves if um, if their business applies. But we want to make sure that we have a broad spectrum of small businesses, restaurants, retail, services. Just because, you know, obviously a retail business is not going to be able to sit on a committee and decide whether or not a restaurant application is appropriate. So um, I think this is the right time to bring this forward. And, and I think it's grossly needed um, for our small businesses.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gambrell.
Um, yes, and um, I have had several conversations with Commissioner Otte and then also um, Dana Johnson, which I believe is supposed to be on the call. And also John Loud and Sharon Mason talking about this. Um, I am in support of this because I do think this is the way that we start getting our economy back. Um, couple things. Um, within the MOU, it's, it's kind of misleading because it says small businesses with their headquarters, regional offices, and central office. To me, that makes it sound big and this is supposed to be small, so I didn't know if we could um, look at that wording. Um, it's found in several places within the agenda item and also the document. Um, how are ten ninety-nine employees going to be viewed? Because I know it addresses the W two employees, but what if the um, small business has ten ninety-nine employees? How are they going to be counted?
I think what the committee is going to do is they're going to look at all the employees. Um, but I, I believe, you know, when we looked at this, this was more full-time employees. So that would be W two employees. But obviously there is going to be um, you know, an accounting of the fact that there's ten ninety-nine employees, but um, the actual count to decide what tier they're going to go in is going to be based on W two employees.
Okay, because like I'm thinking um, Commissioner Otte, because you were at the Georgia Grom to go this week. And, and you know, JRM helped with that. Now, I'm assuming they're a small business here in Cobb County, but I'm not, I'm not sure. But we know they do probably do ten ninety-nine contractors. But yet they've been very impacted by this COVID nineteen situation that we're in. So would they be qualified since they have ten ninety-nine contractors?
If all they have is ten ninety-nine, no, because um, and, and I'm conversing with Dana as we do this because he wasn't part on the meeting, but right now it's the W two employees. So somebody like that would not count. And, and, and the reality is, because the idea is we want to get people back to work. We want these businesses that are giving people full-time jobs, the opportunity to survive. So right now it's W two.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, I know we have a deadline in here that the um, cutoff for applications is going to be June twenty-fourth. Um, when does the chamber anticipate um, or the group, actually it's not the chamber, the group that, the special group that is going to review these applications, when do they see being able to start dispersing the money?
Right, so you know, there, we had to give a, we gave roughly about a month's timeframe for the applications to come in, which is the June twenty-six date. And then um, initially what happened is the chamber staff would go and review every application. And we're, we're not really sure how many, and so this is why there's a little bit of uncertainty of the exact dates. But um, we anticipate that during the first two weeks after the closing of the application deadline, that the chamber staff would go through and review all the applications to make sure that which ones met all the criteria um, to be considered. And then they would be given to the group. And how much time it takes after that, we're hoping to have by the end of July. But you know, without knowing exactly how many applications we're going to have. But the goal is to try to start giving the money out um, you know, two weeks after the, you know, so basically four weeks after the closing.
Okay, because I agree, I, you know, we need to be getting this out, so again.
Right, yeah, the goal is to get the money out as quickly as possible. If we can get it out sooner, we will.
And then my last comment, and I'm not sure if this is something that um, to get from um, Select Cobb Dana Johnson, or if I need to get this from Jason Gaines. I would like to have all of the qualified businesses that are in District One, a list of all their names and contacts that we have, um, because I would like to personally go out and visit my businesses.
Campbell, you and I talked about this on the phone and, and um, whether it's Jason or Dana or whoever, we'll work to try to do that for all the commission districts.
Thank you, Commissioner Otte.
Okay, are you good? Uh, any more questions Commissioner Gambrell?
I know, my, again, my only concern remains with the, you know, stating that their headquarters or regional offices are in Cobb, um, because that makes, gives the impression that this is for a larger business and not a small business.
And this chairman, if that, if, if the other commissioners have an issue with that, we can take out regional offices.
Okay. Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you, Chairman. It was provided in my previous comments, I have a lot of concern about this. I know this is something we all want to do and have stated this from when we had our first call with Holland and Knight, that we all want to support our small businesses. Again, um, looking at thirty-eight percent of our CARES funding going towards this, without having a roadmap in place is something that's a concern to me. But I think we need to get on immediately and address. We are looking certainly to um, to stop the hemorrhage of those who are suffering from lack of employment, which is causing them to have other issues with housing, with food, and other matters. However, the challenge is that if you look at the number of people who've been displaced and the number of small businesses, we need to know that nexus between those who've been displaced and supporting our small business community. Um, to me, to provide an assurance that thirty-eight percent of this funding is going to be that stopgap measure um, for those people who have been displaced. And I'm not quite sure, I, I'm not quite sure um, how far along this helps to get us there. But I do know, we still have a lot of people who are unemployed through our small businesses. A lot of people who've been, who are self-employed. And I know that um, it is in my interest as well as the board's interest to address those populations. So I, I do want to be in support in general. I, I just have a lot of concern about um, again, thirty-eight percent of our dollars going towards this. And um, I have a number of issues that I'm going to address here and I'm going to address them at length. I first saw the proposals from Debbie Blair on May fifteenth. These proposals were sent for Star C and for um, this proposal um, in front of us. I was surprised to see this come forward with no communication. No communication about how this MOU was being devised. I didn't know until I saw the agenda book that Commissioner Otte was the one who was negotiating this. I've had no communication with, with respect to that. I um, because I knew this was coming down the pipe, about a week ago, I put together my own survey and sent it out to our small business or to our business associations across the county. I've also reached out to some of our small businesses by phone to get their feedback. Because one thing I learned is when we set aside the money for food distribution, we still had a lot of issues to address before that was ready for us to vote on it. And I wanted to make sure that we didn't run um, follow some of the same issues of not reaching out to them and having broad discussions to ensure that we were getting this right by um, by those that are in this space. And so for my communications with a number of businesses, I didn't get a chance to hear back from all of them because I was still in haste to um, to try to get feedback. Not knowing again that we were going to be putting this MOU in before there was broad discussion at the board. And I know that if I knew Commissioner Otte was drafting this, I could have been giving him feedback I was receiving in real time so that it could have been considered prior to this MOU coming before us. But nonetheless, I'm going to go through this MOU in painstaking detail because if it's going to take thirty-eight percent of these CARES funding dollars, then I think it's worth it. Especially considering the level of hurt that the number of small businesses are having in Cobb County in response to COVID. The first issue is I was surprised after I spoke to um, Dana Johnson last night to learn that he perceived that this MOU is between Select Cobb and not the chamber. So when I started asking him questions about the chamber, I said the chamber is the entity that we're supposed to be contracting with, according to this document. And he stated he didn't see the final MOU. That gives me just great pause of concern about how this is moving forward and us moving in haste to do something that has not been vetted by all commissioners nor has been seen by the contracting parties. So the first question I have is who is the contracting agency? Is it the Cobb Chamber or is it Select Cobb?
It is Select Cobb and the reason it is, is there are two different funding agencies that are part of the chamber. They're referred to as C six and C three. The county cannot contract with one of them and so it has to be contracted with Select Cobb.
Okay, why not reflected in this MOU?
It is reflected that it was Select Cobb.
Well, the MOU I have before me has the Cobb Chamber throughout the document.
I think it's to Select Cobb.
Okay, so if there's a county attorney who's on the call, I would ask that the MOU be uh, be modified so that it has the appropriate agency on here as Select Cobb. Okay, thank you. Again, I just want to iterate the purpose of which I'm seeing this MOU has been drafted for. This MOU is being drafted to directly improve unemployment numbers by providing cash grants to locally owned and operated small businesses for COVID nineteen. And I want to emphasize that because some of my questions are always going to drive back to what the purpose of this MOU is. Um, hopping down to the bottom of um, the first page, the way that I have it printed. It, um, this document states that it will provide funding for small businesses that have one hundred full-time employees or less. From my poll of different small business association leaders and from different small businesses, some of them felt that that one hundred, they didn't want to see us move over that, but they felt that fifty or less should be a cap. When I spoke to um, Dana, he provided a statistic that seventy-three percent of our business, our small businesses have twenty or less employees. So if the majority of our businesses have twenty percent or less of smaller employees, um, well, I don't know how we're going to ensure that how we distribute this money is reflected on that smaller number. Because one of the biggest issues with the PPP program is that it targeted the larger of employers. And it didn't get to those that are necessarily reflective of um, our small businesses overall. So in this document, the only thing that addresses the employee size is the amount of which employers can, can receive based on whether or not they have one to ten employees, eleven to fifty employees, or fifty-one to one hundred employees. I would like to see this documented to do the same thing that we all thought was wise when we distributed the food distribution funds, is to make sure that this is being done equitably and that this is being done so we can hold people accountable. And so when I talk about the numbers and I'm looking at seventy-three percent of our businesses have employees of twenty or less, I want to know what metric are we going to make sure we are applying to make sure we are equitably distributing funds to those smaller businesses, twenty or less?
Well, first off, let me talk about the numbers. The Small Business Administration classifies a small business as two hundred and fifty employees or less.
Correct.
So in the effort of trying to address the very thing you're talking about, we literally cut this in less than half. What the Small Business Administration would classify as a small business.
Okay.
And then the whole purpose for having a committee, which is going to be comprised of small business owners across the spectrum of restaurant owners, um, services, retail. And, and then also, almost half of the committee, committee like I mentioned is going to be county with five of them being appointed by the commissioners. That is the way that we're going to ensure that it's divided um, up among the small businesses.
Yes, again, I'm looking at a metric because it's one thing to have that in a sense. And then if you look at the number of appointees by each commissioner and you look at all of the people that will be at the table, it is not certain that that is going to be reflected in the outcome. And so for me, again, just how we made sure that we have a metric, a metric or a calculation-based type of approach when we did food distribution, where we base the amount that organizations received on their proportion of food that they, that they had a history of distributing. What I'm trying to get to is, and I don't have the exact answer, so I'm asking for assistance is knowing that we are going to derive some metric to assure that if we have seventy-three percent of our businesses that have twenty or less persons, how will that be reflected in the outcome beyond just having people contribute to the conversation? So that's just.
Based on, based on the numbers, the businesses that are smaller, down with the ten employees or less are going to receive more dollars per, based uh, per employee.
That's not, that's not what I have here. So if you can help me understand that, when I look at the page, it says that small business, one to ten employees will receive up to twenty thousand dollars. Eleven to fifty will receive up to thirty thousand dollars. Fifty-one to one hundred employees will receive up to forty thousand dollars. What I'm seeing says the opposite, that the smaller your organization is, the less maximum.
But Commissioner Cupid, you're taking the, the maximum number, it says up to. So to say that every business that has fifty-one to one hundred employees, up to forty thousand, that they're going to get forty thousand, that just, it doesn't work that way.
Okay. Okay, what I'm just saying here again and looking at the total pot, even though organization could get up to twenty thousand, again, I'm looking at how do, how does the resulting impact of distribution reflect the seventy-three percent?
Well, I mean, just look at, I mean, it, and even if we go with the maximum amount of twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, if you have ten employees and you get twenty thousand dollars, that's two thousand dollars per employee. If you have fifty employees at thirty thousand, that's only six hundred dollars per employee. And if you have a hundred for forty thousand, that's four hundred dollars an employee. So I mean, just by simple math, it works out to be that the smaller ones are going to get more money per employee.
That's not true. When I spoke to Dana, he provided that this, excuse me, let me finish. When I spoke to Dana, he provided that the employee size is based on what the employer had stated in their IRS documents at a certain point in the year. It's not necessarily reflective of the number of employees that is going to be with that organization at the time of the application. So the time of the application could reflect a different number than what has been reported otherwise.
You're missing the point about what this is trying to accomplish. This is trying to accomplish to get people back to work. So the number of employees that are at, that are employed at the time of the application is not what we're interested in. And if you look at the CARES Act, the way it worked with businesses from the federal government, it was based on the numbers of employees that the company had normally. And then if you give money, you were not allowed to have involuntary furloughs. So, you know, to say that we're going to base it on the number of employees that they have at the time of the application, I don't think that's.
Okay, then there's a discrepancy than what you're telling me and what Dana shared me. And I'm not making accusations. All I'm asking is how do we make sure that there's an equitable metric? So, you know, this is to me not about right or wrong. This is just ensuring that the way that we get the funding in the hands of our businesses reflects, is reflected in their composition.
All right, Commissioner Cupid, so what, what language would you want to put in there to address the metric?
Again, I don't, I don't, like I said, I don't necessarily know that. It could be just the volume of funding if it's, if it's the fifty million, I can't necessarily say seventy percent of that goes towards smaller businesses. But I do think there should, there should be probably a disproportionate, a proportionate number based on, uh, the number of smaller businesses. And somebody who's more used to dealing with numbers a little bit better than I can, can assist with that. I'm just sharing that this is an observation that I have. And it's reflected, and it's reflected in the feedback that I receive from small businesses and wanting to even see the number of business, of number of employees dropped. I have a forty-six page document of different, um, small business plans that have been implemented across the fifty countries and the District of Columbia. Some of them do limit their, um, dollars to businesses twenty-five or less. Some of them look limited to micro businesses and have other types of, of ways of making sure that issues like that are being addressed, so that's just bringing attention.
I hear your concern, and obviously, I, I think the same issues with CARES, the CARES, the allocation of funds is sometimes not to bigger businesses, even not the smaller ones, but there's, you know, there's a, there's a lot of ways to approach this. But this MOU is just one, was just one method.
Yes, okay, so then I'm going to continue with additional questions that I have. Excuse me, I'm going through my notes here. A lot of our smaller businesses are very concerned about the impact that the clause or requirement that the business must be located and owned, or it must be located in an owned or leased commercial space, will kick out a number of small businesses that are operating here in the county. Um, a number of them have reflected, had to do overhead costs. And because our society has become more technology-driven, a lot of them do operate out of their home. And I believe that that clause does not necessarily help drive home our mission, which is to directly improve unemployment numbers. I, I feel that if we were to keep that in there, it would end up having, um, inequity in how this how these dollars are being funded to our small businesses. So my ask, and I think that also is consistent with the, um, request that, um, Ed Richardson provided here, where he stated that, um, he would also eliminate the requirement for businesses to be located in an owned or leased commercial space, since many small businesses utilize home offices.
You know, part of the idea here is to get as many people back to work as possible. And, you know, yes, there are a lot of small businesses that operate out of their homes, but that's one and two people. That's the most effective way, it was, we believe that the most effective way to get as many people to benefit from this and get back to work is to deal with the businesses that are established not in somebody's home. I mean, yes, I, I don't disagree. We have a lot of businesses that are in their homes. However, to get the majority of the people or as many people as possible back to work, that's where that requirement is in there.
What proof is there that most, um, in-home businesses only have one to two people?
I'm not going to sit here and, and say that there is or there isn't proof. I'm just explaining to you why it was written, the way it was written.
I, and I'm sharing that that will have, and that will have, um, an inequitable distribution of dollars to our small businesses, particularly those in District Four, where we do not have the amount of commercial space that's in other areas. And it also runs counter to the earlier conversation that we had about seventy-three percent of our businesses being twenty persons or less.
Yes, but if you look at-
Commissioner, I'm not done, please, thank you. It also states in here that businesses of one to ten employees can receive up to a certain amount. So what I'm showing here is that there's already going to be some type of, um, bias away from the smaller organizations to show preference to the larger organizations because they employ least people here in the county. Even though there's nothing that's in this document that's providing that there should be such a bias. And to me, I would like to see, if we're going to kick those employees out, we should have a very darn good basis for doing so. I would like to see, um, as we have numbers to show that seventy-three percent of our businesses are twenty or less, I would like to see the number of businesses that we have in Cobb that may have one to two persons or maybe out of a home. Because it could be that we have an over-proportion of those businesses. And those persons, whether or not they have one to two people, they are still people who could run into problems with housing or food stability if they aren't funded through this. I also have a, um, a concern about it. Concern about it, again, because in dealing with our business associations, and I don't know how part, how much of a part of the discussion of this they were in. But a lot of them are the ones that had challenges getting PPP funding in the first place. A lot of them are the ones that had challenges getting access to other sources of funding in the first place. If, if there's a bias that does not include those businesses, then I think that I think that is not necessarily going to comport with what the purpose of this is. And it's going to leave a significant number of businesses out, and it's going to have a disparate impact on District Four. Um, and it could have a disparate impact on businesses anywhere in the county. But particularly in District Four, because of our lack of commercial space, it will have a disparate impact. I spoke, somebody mentioned JMG. I spoke to a woman who owns an event-oriented business. She has multiple employees beyond the two, and she stated she operates out of her home and helps with overhead. Her business has impacted significantly because a lot of businesses are not, or because of social distancing requirements and shelter in place, there are not a lot of events that are going on in the public. But what I'm hearing from you is because she's not in a commercial space, her employees should not be considered by this, or her business will not be considered as weightily as others. I think that's problematic.
Let me wait here.
Let me, let me jump in here.
First off, first off, first off, excuse me one second. I can think of, I can think of a, a couple like daycare where they do it out of their home. Um, that would be impacted by this. What would be the impact if we just took out the part about the fact that took out that line about it has to be located in the commercial, uh, longer leased commercial space?
All right, so first off, let me, let me address it in a couple of different parts. Um, first off, in order for someone to operate a business out of their home, their business license says they can have no employees. Okay, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, if you are going to operate a business that has employees, you have to have land use permit. So to address what Commissioner Cupid is saying and what you're asking, Mr. Chairman, one thing that could be put in there, if you want to have something that's operating out of their home, then they have to have a, um, valid land use permit. Because otherwise, they're not, um, following the code.
Okay, well, it seems like a reasonable compromise.
Not necessarily, because employees don't necessarily need to be operating out of somebody's home to be employed from someone's home. People are virtual assistants. People have a lot of employees where if they could be acting on behalf of an employer without operating inside of someone's home. In the instance where, in the instance where I spoke of-
Commissioner Cupid, can I answer your questions?
No, I'm not done. When I'm-
You have to let him answer your question.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask a question.
You asked questions before and you-
Conversation here, okay? Let him answer, let him answer your question, Commissioner Cupid. I know you have lots of questions and we're going to answer them, so.
I said that wasn't, Chairman, what I'm telling you is I wasn't asking a question as I'm making an assertion. And I feel like when we are making assertions, then the other commissioner should have the, should have the ability to be able to let that commissioner make their statement prior to intervening.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. In the example where I provided of the woman who has an event business, her staff is not necessarily in her home. Their business is out in the community. They set up, they do different events. And her business would be disqualified if she doesn't have a land use permit indicating that those employees are operating in her home. And that is not the case with her business.
Okay.
Employees would also not be W two, Mr. Chairman, they would be ten ninety-nines.
And they, they potentially could be, but that's not necessarily the case. If they are independent contractor, they would be ten ninety-nine. But not just because somebody isn't operating onsite, doesn't mean necessarily a IC. Somebody could very well be an employee and still not be operating onsite.
Okay, all right. Uh, do I believe you have some other issues?
Yeah, so one thing I would ask, again, the first thing I talked about was equity with respect to the smaller business sizes. And second, it will go a very long way to having an equitable response to businesses that are being impacted by COVID nineteen to, to remove that requirement. We can still get to the heart of what this is doing and help all of our small businesses.
All right, Commissioner Gamble, how do you feel about that?
Okay, just for clarification, what are we proposing to remove?
It's the requirement that businesses must be located in an owned or leased commercial space to be able to receive funding through this proposal.
Okay, the way that I look at this is owned or leased. The or gives us an option. So we have LUPs that give, you know, essentially permission to have a business running out of the home. So to me, that would be owned and they would have an LUP in order to be legally functioning out of their home as a business. The or, commercial gives, if, if they're located in a commercial location. Um, you know, and, and again, going back to the small business, um, limited professional services that we approved back in February. You know, we, we have a business that is, you know, it's restricted just to the use. It's, it's not a commercial use, but we have been zoned accordingly to operate that business out of that location. So in my mind, they would be, they would fit into that owned category because again, they're permitted to be there.
Is there apprehension towards supporting businesses that are based out of their home? And I know, I say this with respect to there being a lot of shared office spaces or there being a lot of sites where people can pop up and do drop-in work outside of their home. So they may not necessarily lease a space, but they may utilize a space with one of the, um, new formats that businesses can, you know, pop, they can show up at one location to operate, to have meetings and still operate outside of their home.
Right, but I guess also you have to remember that part of the CARES funding is to address the COVID nineteen situation. So if they're operating out of their home, they're not having to put up the Sneeze Shield. They're not having to buy extra PPE to supply to their customers or their, you know, um, guests who come to take their services. Um, they're not having to do special marketing. So in that respect, you know, again, if they don't have a land use permit that has told the county, you know, that they're functioning out of this location as a business, I'm, I'm going to be a little hesitant on that. And then also going back to the fact that they're not W two employees, they're contracted employees.
If they, if we know that, how do we know whether or not somebody has WT or, or, um, independent contractors?
That would be, that, they would have to disclose that on their financials, which are part of the application.
Okay, and I'm asking, okay, getting back to your first point. We are providing this MOU to directly improve unemployment numbers for small businesses adversely affected by COVID. This is not that they have to provide any particular activity to address exposure. This is, this is separate and apart from exposure to COVID. Because in a term, you know, there could be many professionals that can operate out of, out of a shared space that may not come, or out of a leased space that may not come into contact with someone that's COVID-related. And that contact with the public is an assumed, is an assumed factor that is not, that is not communicated in the MOU, because we never said that that's a bar that the, the small businesses have to meet the criteria of interacting with the public.
No, but while we don't say that, you know, they have to, um, provide monthly reporting on how the funds are used. Um, and then the second part is proof of rehiring retaining employees. So, you know, again, this is open-ended. Um, and if somebody is working out of their house, again, doing contracted work, your contracted work ebbs and flows with demand. Um, so you're not going to be able to give the proof of being able to rehire or retain the employees because you don't know if there's going to be demand for that service.
But that's any business ebbs and flows with demand, whether or not it's in someone's home or outside of their home. I think if this, if, if this proposal includes businesses, one to ten employees, it seems to me as if there's a bias that is being communicated that would exclude the one to ten employees. Because this document never said two to ten employees. To me, when I see one to ten employees in this document, it makes an assumption that someone could be self-employed. And somebody who was self-employed could be adversely affected by COVID nineteen. And their ability to maintain their self-employment helps us to be able to address unemployment numbers.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow, any other comments?
Yes, sir. Um, they have to verify that they have a business license and operating Cobb.
Correct.
So that would, to me, would cover, I mean, we're, we're getting into the specifics here. And I think we need to be removed from this and let the Chamber or Select Cobb do this selection process. I understand what you're saying, but um, under ten employees, one to ten employees, I would think would still qualify, whether they're operating out of their home or in a building. But, um, if they have a valid business license and operating Cobb, you know, if, let the Select Cobb or the committee determine if they're eligible or not. I mean, they can apply, but it may not get considered.
I asked, I'm sorry.
But they can apply. So I, I'm good with this. I think, um, I did have some questions and Dana.
I'm not, Commissioner Ott has answered most of them.
Yeah. My concern was with the committee being able to, um, apply if their business was eligible and applied, you know, um, how would that work? But they've assured me that they would have to recuse themselves if they, um, submit an application. And I know they're trying to get a group of small businesses to be on the committee from, you know, bankers, CPAs and, and the like, so. Um, I, I think that could be changed that the leased or owned brick and mortar building, if they're under ten employees and have a valid license, they can apply, but that doesn't mean they're going to automatically be given money or considered. I mean, but they could apply, is all I would say. And I also found out from Dana that they're trying to make this, um, equally distributed amongst, um, the four district, Mission District.
All right, so what I, I think what I hear here is that we have, and the issue is about the commercial, commercial own property. They have to, they have to be leased their own commercial property. And Commissioner Gamble, uh, Commissioner Cupid has an issue that that's going to exclude a number of people in small businesses. So what I just heard Commissioner Burrow say, and I think that Commissioner Ott also, or maybe, or maybe somebody else, is the brick and mortar businesses, if you could put language in there, would that, would that address your concerns, Commissioner Cupid?
What I'm here, I think I agree with Commissioner Burrow. I don't think that she knows, at least her comments don't reflect what's in this document that is saying a business must be in an owned or leased commercial space. But I agree with her that as long as they have a business license in Cobb, that they should be able to apply. According to this, they would not be considered. So I think this, you know, I think it should be removed. I also got an email from a small business owner that said, "From the Cobb Business License page, home-based businesses can have employees just as long as they don't work out of the home. The requirement for commercial space should be removed. Their consulting firm has W two employees and leases, um, them to customers to work onsite at customer locations. Their firm is based out of their home and they are not required to have a land use permit."
Okay, so, so why don't we do this? Um, why don't we put in there commerce, uh, leased or commercial or home-based enterprises? Um, why don't we put in there commer, uh, leased or commercial or home-based enter, uh, businesses, all right?
Support that.
Both the bases, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. I appreciate that.
Well, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Chairman, um, if if that's the direction the board wants to go, why have that line in there at all? Because if you're going to say, I mean, right now, I I believe, I agree with Commissioner Gamble where it says business must be located in and owned, which somebody can, you know, the only one that may not apply is if somebody lives in an apartment. But if you want to have, um, you know, for example, I got a text about somebody might have a, uh, say a cleaning service business where all the employees, you know, nobody works out of the home. So, I mean, if that's the issue, I mean, I think that whole line could be removed. Um, it was written to just basically make sure that, you know, it was one more safety net to make sure that the business was located in Cobb. The whole intent was to try to make sure that whatever businesses were helped, it was helping, you know, Cobb County folks and not some business that just happens to have an office in Cobb, but all the employees work in another county. So, I mean, if it can just as easily be removed from the MOU that that says business must be located in an owned or leased commercial space.
Well, I think the thing is, is if we're trying to get, make them Cobb-based, by leaving those, by putting home-based in there, that covers both of the bases.
That's fine, either way. I mean, you know, the intent, the intent of that line went along with, you know, some of the other ones where it talks about, we were, we were trying to come up with all avenues, uh, to make sure that it was a Cobb-based business.
Sure, so, let's, I hear what you're saying. And I think that by adding the word home-based in there, that, again, you know, right now. Okay, let's put, so Commissioner Cupid, we're going to put home-based on that line, okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. That goes a long way and will help a lot of businesses if they have qualified to, um, apply. Thank you. That's one of the main issues that I had with this. Um, I'm just going to go through the rest of my notes just to make sure that, um, the big points are covered. Something that I spoke to Dana with at length is something that we all discussed at length with respect to the nonprofit funding, which gets to the piece of accountability of making sure that funding is being spent. How, um, how how they report that they will spend it and that comports with the legal requirements of the CARES funding. With the, uh, money that was distributed for the food distribution, it was required that businesses have some receipt to show proof that their monies were being spent in a specific manner that comported with the intent of that agreement. Here, I'm seeing that a report is being required, monthly reporting of how funds are exhausted, proof of hiring or retaining employees. And I would just ask that we somehow the proof of rehiring or retaining employees, that we carry that proof to also show proof of how the funds are being utilized outside of hiring. So, it could be, it could be receipts or invoices, but some manner of, um, of verifying that those funds have been spent, um, consistent with this document. There was a highly televised, um, instance where a business received PPP funding and was not spending it appropriately on their employees. And I think we can just cover our bases by just adding that term proof to not just only cover the rehiring or retaining, but to other, um, expenditures with the funding.
Well, you know, I always support anybody, any commissioner about making sure we have total accountability for funds.
Okay.
Right, and the last, um, line where it says companies must request a second disbursement of grant funds no more than 60 days, the, the whole idea of have, breaking it down into 50% increments was so that to get the money out there, because when, in talking to small businesses, a lot of them said, you know, there are certain things that we need the money today. But we did not want to give all the money because we wanted to make sure they met the requirements. And it will be one of the requirements that they have to provide IRS forms and receipts to get the rest of the money. And we have the clawback in there, so that they do not meet the commitments, they have to give the money back. And that's also why we wanted to do 50%, because we did not want to give all the money and then find out that they didn't need it and then they don't have the money to pay the county, you know, to give back the fund.
Now, I appreciate that, and I think we just want to make sure we're, you know, spending the funds in a way that passes, um, passes muster and that helps us to be able to do that. Again, let's see. Only thing is, just, just an observation is, I don't think a, a business might necessarily have mal-intent if they don't meet their requirements because they simply may give it a good heave-ho and may just have challenges. And if they're having challenges, that's what puts them in a position to ask for the funding. So, I have a tough time acquiring them to pay funding that they already don't have. If they really tried to hire, maybe they just, their business just couldn't come back or bounce back. Um, I think we're going to have, we could end up having challenges with that. Where some of the loans or grants provided to, um, other businesses have been forgivable or, um, payable over an ex, you know, repayable over a certain period of time. I I just think we could end up having challenges here when somebody's really doing their best and it just is going to end up falling short.
Well, well, part of the concern was that, um, we know that in talking to small business owners that there are some expenses they have out there. I mean, if you have a restaurant and you don't have the food and you don't have the supplies you need to reopen, you're going to have to be able to spend some of the money for that. But the concern was what we didn't want was some business owner to apply to the, to the fund to get money and say that they're going to hire their employees back and then go and spend the money on some other business expense that has nothing to do with hiring employees. And then we turn around and nobody's gone back to work.
Yeah.
There's no way to get the money back because they don't open. And so, you know, it was, it was a delicate balance, and that's part of the reason why it was divided 50/50. The idea was, we do acknowledge that there are some expenses that don't involve hiring employees before you can open the business. But because the intent was to get people back to work, we just needed to make sure that all the money wasn't squandered in something that didn't get people back to work.
Yeah, it's, in that, um, paragraph, it provides that the independent committee will have an MOA with the business. And in that, they'll provide how the funds will be dispersed. Here, the clawback is based on whether or not they don't, they can't rehire or maintain the current workforce. Maybe, maybe we can make a contention upon whether or not they executed their plan. And, you know, if they've given, like, a good effort, but they still can't maintain it because, let's, let's share before, maybe they don't have the demand. They're setting all these things up, but they just can't get the funds in that will make, um, sense of, um, utilizing all their employees. I just, I don't want to put those businesses in a, a position of having a difficult time, um, have to pay back funds.
Right, but there's nothing in here that says that, um, a business cannot come back to the committee and say, you know, hey, here's what I did. I did what I told you I was going to do. It didn't do all what I needed to do. I need some more money. It, it's not prohibited for that person or that business to get the additional money. It just simply states, you know, we're trying to state that our intent is to get people back to work.
Sure, and I, I certainly, um, receive that. Um, and hopefully the businesses are aware that they should have those open lines of communication so that we're not penalizing them for trying and they end up being in a worse financial position than they were.
Well, you know, remember, we're trying to help them here. We're not trying to, uh, you know, put them in a position that doesn't help them. We're trying to get them open, we're trying to keep them open, we're trying to get the people back to work.
Understood. Okay. One moment. Okay, similar to when we did the, um, distribution for food, I would ask that the BLC have the ability to, um, to look over the recipients of this, um, as we will, um, for the food distribution and vote on that final list. Also.
Board is not voting on the food list.
On the what list?
The food list.
That's my understanding that we were supposed to. Debbie, is that not in the agreement?
I don't think so.
We would, we would get a list, we would get a list of those, of those companies that were, or organizations who provided the funding.
Yes.
Requirement on the part of the board to approve that list.
That's my understanding.
That's why we hired WFM to do that.
And and the similar, the similar position is, um, with this is that once all the recipients are determined, there will be a public announcement and the board will be given a list of who is going to be giving money. That was written in, directly to match the food.
That's not my recollection, but if I can have someone from the county attorney's office speak to that, that would be helpful.
I can't hear whoever is speaking.
Debbie, are you there?
I, I am here, but evidently.
I can't.
Right there.
I think she's coming to this room. Commissioner, hang tight. Okay, thank you.
And and just kind of a, a note about that, remember that the whole reason that we didn't have the board voting on the list was to make it independent, um, of the board of commissioners. And I think, and we come to businesses, once again, the same idea is that we're going to have an out, outside agency or group make the decision for the board, um, and then notify the board. I mean, we, we talked about that, the, the board did not want to be the picking the winners and losers.
Uh, excuse me, Commissioner Cupid?
Yes.
The food, um, recipients will be approved by the board.
That's what I thought. I would ask that we do the same thing here. I think it just gives that extra layer of, um, oversight that the board, that the public would expect of our commissioners and how a significant money, significant monies will be spent in response to COVID.
Okay, all I'm saying is, is that I hear what you're, I hear what we're doing here. I'm just hoping that the board commissioners be prepared for a special call meeting because, um, in order to meet the, uh, the, uh, concur with the law, as soon as that list is approved by the board, by the, uh, by this committee, I'd like to have a special call meeting to ensure that we get these funds allocated, uh, in a, uh, you know, in a quick fashion here. So, I just want to give you a heads up.
Sure, I would be, again, I, I, I think we all want to do this. I'd be open to it. I just think we should have a comparable level oversight.
All right, okay, all right.
Ms. Chairman, I, I, I just, I can't agree. I, I just think that what, what'll end up happening is we're going to go through business by business and we're going to, I mean, just look at how long we've talked about this today. Um, I just think that what's going to happen is that'll delay the money getting to the businesses that need it. And we're going to go business by business. I mean, think about this FOS list. We can't even agree on a FOS list item by item. And so, I just, I can't support, I just think that we need to give it to select Cobb, let them follow the rules and the guidelines that we put in place and get this money out to the businesses that need it.
Well, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a, it would be a board vote to downvote on the whole list. It wouldn't be a case-by-case basis unless the board, we need it through or otherwise to remove a business from that, from that li, from that list. The only, the only downside is, is it probably have a long discussion, like you're up this morning. Uh, but I can assure you that, I hear what you're saying, Commissioner Odd, but I also agree with, we need to get these funds out there. Uh, the unemployment is serious and I understand the need to have board oversight. I just want to let you know, Commissioner Cupid, that this is, when we get the list, it'll get up or down vote on the list unless somebody, unless it agrees to remove a business from that list.
Yeah, I would just ask, you know, again, make, let's make ourselves available. Once we have that timeline together, let's plan on meeting. This is something that is not new for the board to do. When we distribute funds, we, um, you know, a lot of us, we may not dissect every business that applies for a contract with the county. But if there's any issue that does come up, it provides us the ability to ask questions. So, I agree with you, Chairman. I don't anticipate this is going to be a line-by-line investigation of businesses, but it gets to the spirit of us ensuring, um, the equity of this and, and, uh, the significance of this. And addressing, addressing the parity of the distribution of these funds.
All right, all I'm saying is that the list is approved on Friday. We will have a board meeting on Sunday to get this board, get this list in order to meet the timeline that the law requires for open meeting. So, we're going to be, we're going to be kicking the can down the road on this one here. I hear Commissioner Odd and Prince will understand where he's getting at here, but I also understand because it's $50 million, that a lot of people, the public are going to be looking at us.
Exactly.
And I think if we have one last, one last step to make sure that they saw that we all saw the list and had a discussion on it and moved on it, that provides the, you know, it doesn't mean everyone's going to agree with it, but it's a less level of surety that we've given due diligence than it merits for this amount of, right?
You said that well, the diligence that it does merit. Let's see. I don't recall seeing in here a similar clause that was in the food distribution, um, MOU where if there are any funds that aren't utilized by a certain date, then those can be reconsidered amongst the other businesses. I, I think there should be some consideration if they're excess funds, what the path forward is.
Um, I'd say the question again, I was trying to read something about what we talked about a little bit earlier.
Yes, in the, um, food distribution document, there was consideration for, um, the organizations to have to use funding by a certain date or those funds would be, um, reconsidered for distribution amongst the other organizations.
So, um, the thought process was, um, as we talked about, and it, and it discusses it in there, that, um, the committee would be divided in half with one half looking at two commission districts and the other looking at the other two commission districts with the rules that are stated in the MOU right now. The first, um, stopgap would be that, um, the committee, if there was not an equal number of businesses in each commission district, they would reach out to the board and that commissioner to say, you know, hey, we haven't received, um, enough applications for that district. And then, if by chance, which we don't believe is going to be the case, that we get through all the app, the applications and all the money is not allocated using the criteria that's in front of us, then we would come back to the board and have permission to potentially give money to, um, companies that had received the PPP money. But right now, the belief is that all the money will be allocated with, um, under the criteria that's listed here.
Oh, okay, so here, connecting what you're sharing with what's in the MOU for this and then what we have in the MOU for the, um, for the food distribution. It states here that any funds not distributed by December 30th, 2020, um, the acquired incurred date set forth in the, uh, CARES Act shall be forfeited. Here in the MOU for the donations, we actually set a deadline earlier, um, so we could make sure the funds could be set part of December 30th. We said any funds unused by the initial recipient as of September 30th, 2020 may be reallocated in order to utilize the funds prior to December 30th, 2020. So, I think there's just, to me, I'm missing a statement in this document that allows us to repurpose those funds. And maybe, you know, maybe we pull back the date where the businesses have to spend those funds so that, so that we can ensure that all funding is being utilized.
Well, that's the whole purpose for having the earlier deadline is so that the funds can be used, um, prior to the December 31st deadline.
Okay, I don't see the earlier deadline. Like, for instance, here for the food distribution, all of the funds have to be extended by November, by September 30th. In this document, it states here that it just says any funds not distributed by December 30th will just be forfeited. And I think, you know, just to ensure that we're ensuring, because $50 million is a lot, ensuring that we are fully utilizing those funds, there should be some type of provision where if those funds are not used by a date prior to December 30th, that we have the ability to repurpose those funds.
But you remember that there's, there's a line in that it says companies must request the second disbursement of grant funds no more than 60 days after the first disbursement is provided.
Right.
But so, we're going to know early on whether or not a company is not going to use it. I mean, because, look, we have a deadline of, uh, late June for the applications. We've talked in the response to Commissioner Gamble, we've talked about the money being allocated, uh, hopefully within a month. And so, you know, 60 days after that, so that would be July, August to September. So, we're in the same ballpark with September 30th.
Are we? Okay, is it possible to add a clause in here stating that the funds Are we? Okay. Is it possible to add a clause in here stating that the funds must be utilized by September 30th?
Well, but keep in mind, we have in here that they must request the second dispersment within 60 days. They may not be able to spend them by September 30th.
Okay, and that's the issue. If not by the 30th, we have the date in here, we have a date in here for them to be, for the funds to be utilized by the 30th of December. Can we pull, can we find a date, even if it's October 31st or November 15th, where any funds not used will come back to the county so that they can be dispersed? So we're not leaving money on...
We can put an October 31st date in there.
Commissioner Ott, do we want to put October 31st? Because again, if we have a second wave, this could impact businesses in that October, November timeframe based on some of the conversations we've heard.
Well, I think that the big concern is not spending the money, or well, obviously not getting the money out to the businesses that need it, but also not spending the money by December 31st. That is a hard fast deadline in the CARES Act. There is no grace period on that currently. So, you know, whatever date we put in there, you know, it's very difficult until we sit down with these small businesses and we talk to the folks on the committee. That's why we have the things in there that we do, you know, give them 50%. We talked about why we have that. 60 days after the first dispersment, that's why we have that. I mean, to put a hard and fast date, I think we may be hurting the very people we're trying to help. I mean, I think a lot of these companies are still trying to figure out, and if we do have a resurgence in the fall, there may be a totally different need. And they may come back and say, hey, you know, for my second dispersment here, I've got to do something different because now we have a resurgence.
Commissioner, this is Debbie Blair. May I make a comment?
Sure.
Um, the food grant is a reimbursable grant. So they, they have time periods to file their reimbursement. They can make their, you know, they can purchase food and then apply to be reimbursed up to their maximum grant amount. This already has the date in there of the 60 day period. So that's why there was not a second kind of deadline at the, at the end.
That's helpful to know, Debbie. So are you saying that the proof of their spending has to be provided within that 60 day period?
That's correct.
Is that, does that encompass both the first and second dispersment?
Yes.
Okay, I just thought that applied for the first one.
And Commissioner Ott, Chairman, I have a question for Debbie while she's on. Debbie, an issue's been raised, you know, with the food. We're basically reimbursing an expense, okay? The county's holding the funds and they're reimbursed. And those are nonprofits. But when we talk about this business, can the county directly fund businesses? I mean, if the board, if the board is voting on a list, is the board not picking winners and losers? And are we not then basically deciding, you know, as a board, as a government, to fund private business? Whereas, you know, the whole idea of getting select Cobb to do it was as a pass through so that a non-government entity was funding them. You know what I'm saying?
Well, it's, the select Cobb is basically working the same as WFN in that WFN is analyzing, they're receiving the applications and analyzing the applications. And then the board is simply voting on the final list of grant recipients. And from what I understood, y'all saying just now it would work the same way for, for this purpose. That the committee would determine the eligible businesses and then the board simply approves the name, the list of grant recipients.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid, you still have the floor?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm referring back to, I don't know, I'm hearing a strange noise in the background somewhere. I'm referring to an email that we received from Ed Richardson in which he had asked for a certain metrics to be met to address the disparate impact that COVID has had on minority communities. And he asked that the county consider a goal of awarding at least 15% of total grant funds to minority owned businesses in the county. And that the chamber also have a goal to subcontract at least 15% of a small business grant fund administration fee to minority owned businesses located in Cobb. Has there been consideration of that by any of the board members?
Commissioner Burrow, how do you feel about that?
I think that's a question we need to run by legal because we don't currently have a policy for our purchasing ordinance, I don't believe, and I don't know how, can we set that as a requirement or what Dana and what do they, what does Dana say and what does Commissioner Ott think? I don't know. I'm asking legally, can we?
All right, Ms. Chairman, my thoughts are I don't support that. I think all businesses in Cobb are affected equally. And I think that the plan should address all businesses equally.
Commissioner Gambrell?
I concur with Commissioner Ott, and that will also be part of my comments on item number 17 that we'll be discussing shortly.
Okay, so Commissioner, Debbie?
Yes.
So I want you to respond to Commissioner Burrow's question.
I, Bill and I are looking at one another, and I'm going to have to do a little bit of research on that. I don't know if we can, if we can write that into the contract. I have to get back to you.
I can share this. When the Braves came, we discussed minority participation. We didn't require a certain percent, but we stated a certain percent was a goal, and that was articulated in one of the contracts. And I met periodically with County Manager Hankerson and also spoke with Steve McCullers and found out that we even exceeded that goal. But it was something that was purposefully being tracked to ensure that, well, at least on their part, they wanted to make a good faith effort towards hitting that. I can share that there's a lot of, there has been a lot of coverage on the disparate impact of COVID and on minority businesses being less likely to have received COVID money. So this is not something where minority businesses have been impacted equally. Not having a job or not having a business, that's an equal impact. But certainly, some communities have been impacted more than others without question.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll let Debbie research that, and then at 1:30 we'll address that issue. I'm sure you can address any comments, Mr. Cupid.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, one of the suggestions that I have here is to expand the pool of eligible grantees to include self-employed workers. I presume because we have this, this small business proposal includes businesses of one, that that should imply a self-employed business. And then it also says to also include independent contractors, since many small businesses fall into those categories. I don't think, again, from looking at the proposal, that it makes any, that it looks uniquely at businesses that could be operating as an independent contractor as it does for a small business. I don't know if somebody else has observed something different.
Okay, I don't have any comments, so. Sorry, is that, are there questions? Commissioner Cupid, you have more?
Is how, how will we ensure reporting from the chamber or select Cobb back to the county? Where we've had this ongoing relationship with WFN in administering our grant program. And there's been that history of our working together and then being able to administer this program. This is unique to the county, and again, it's a significant amount of dollars where we still want to ensure that this funding is being spent in a way that comports with our county obligation under the CARES Act. So I'm curious to know, well, I would request that there be some reporting mechanism on a monthly basis at least to let us know what's going on with those funds.
I think that's a reasonable request, and I'm sure Finance will make sure they provide that report to us.
All right, well, Chairman, let's talk about how, I mean, the intent was, this is not going to be a rolling dispersal of funds like the food. The idea was that all of the businesses that are going to get money would be determined in and out at the same time. So they would all get their 50% relatively at the same time. We'd get their second 50% right after that. And we do not get a monthly report from Frank Newton on CPG and all the other funds that they manage for the county. They basically come when there are additional grant monies. But the intent here, this is not rolling like the food, so it's a lot different than the food.
I understand. All I'm saying is that every month, at least at the end of the month, Finance has an idea of how much we spend. If they spend no money, then the report would be the same for the following month. I'm not saying we tie this to the distribution of the funds. Just at the end of the month, whatever Bill has on his records, he provides to the county.
Right, but you're talking about the overall 130 million.
No, just, look, every, every, Finance, whenever they disperse money, they have a report. They can provide us what funding they've expended for the month, all right? This is just another report that comes out of that. It's not tied to, it's not tied to the distribution of the $50 million. It's just what does it look like at the end of the month on Bill's balance sheet that he gives to us so we can see where they are in spending of that money. That's all it is.
Okay, if Finance can do that, that would be helpful, Chairman, because they'll be the ones that actually probably be holding those dollars to go through.
Yeah, for instance, right now, for the CARES legislation, all right, they provide us a regular report on how that money's being spent.
Yes, true.
It's just another report.
Okay, yep, thank you. Those are all my questions.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, I have details that need to be, that I want to point out because we have had comments about these. First of all, as Commissioner Ott stated, there is a callback clause in there that it will, the money will have to be repaid if the business is awarded these funds but doesn't reopen or doesn't, you know, use them appropriately. So also, this, this is for Cobb-based businesses. They do not have to be a chamber member. It's for all businesses based in Cobb. There's, there's been some question about that. And also, if they've received PPP money or small business loan money from the federal government, they cannot money from this, from the county CARES Act. And then I, I thought that with the food distribution, we were getting report of the organizations that receive that. But we are, I understood Debbie Blair to say that we are voting on approving that list?
That's what she said. It would be like, that's correct.
Okay.
And as soon as we get that list, you know, we'll be having a special call meeting, make sure we approve the list, so we can move this along.
Okay.
Chairman, I just wanted to clarify that that list is going to be all the, no, you can't remove individual ones, correct?
It will be an up or down vote on the list.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have any other questions, Commissioner Burrow?
That's all I get on that.
Chairman, I would just, I would just want to add, with any vote that this board makes, we're not restricted in our ability to impact, to impact the outcome of that vote. I think saying that it's only an up or down vote, I think is a highly restrictive measure. I then also think the board votes in contemplation of the public. The public should have the ability to see that list and also have the time to be able to weigh in. Something that I didn't talk about that's been included in some of the small business programming across the country is certain requirements of businesses, you know, that fit certain criteria. There could be some that are objectionable for some reason. I can't necessarily say right here. But there should be ability to have clear discussion and deliberation of anything that comes before the board for a vote, and I would ask that you not limit that. We've never had a requirement that this board only vote something in bank for a particular agenda item.
Yeah, but what influences my decision, Commissioner, is that people are hungry, businesses are going out of business, and that we have to be influenced by that. So I'm just saying, obviously, when we get, when we get the measure, all the commissioners are going to weigh in on it, and if three commissioners want to do something with that list, then that's how it's going to work.
I agree with you. I just, again, I just find it, we just think we should treat need, treat each need with some sense of equity. When we said people were hungry, we waited. When people needed food, we waited to get it right. So I understand our businesses have need, but this board has always tried to get things right. And getting things right should not trump expediency because to be in a position where you don't have the ability to deliberate can end up causing more challenges on the back end. So I agree with you that we want to do this quickly, but I just, I know we've had an abundance of consideration for food distribution, and I think we can do this here to get it right with $50 million of CARES money.
Okay, all right. All right, so let's go on to 17, Commissioner Burrow.
Would you like me to explain it first?
Okay, all right.
I mean, I just, you know, I mean, I'm in the hot seat, I might as well stay there. So I mean, this has been in direct response to what this board discussed on previous meetings. We've heard comments from some of the commissioners that we needed to deal with folks in apartments and people in extended state hotels. And this program, this is not something new, unlike the business thing where we're creating something new, the food thing where we created something new. This is a program that is already existing in other counties and in the Atlanta area. And it, and it directly addresses those, some of the issues that were previously stated by the commissioners. Is it all encompassing? No. But once again, like the businesses, like the food, it gets money to the people in need. But what's unique about it is the fact that the tenant has to participate and the landlord has to participate. This is not just handing out of money. So everybody has skin in the game. And I believe that the percentage of the, and it's going to directly help Cobb County residents and especially those with children and families.
I think, Ms., obviously you hit me with some of that agenda item. But Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, I support this too. You know, when, when we talked toward the food item, this shelter was a concern as well and evictions. And I know, working with the task force committee, there have been a lot of outreach from nonprofit organizations that have been helping people that have been displaced because of COVID-19 and loss of jobs and so forth. So I do support this. I just, I know that there are provisions in there that it's only for Cobb residents or citizens, so I support this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gambrell?
Okay, I'm not in support of this right now. Several questions. In qualified apartments, we have a lot of landlords that are renting to low income families that have not received, you know, rental, monthly rental payments, and they feel that they should be applicable to apply for this as well, however this limits to it just being an apartment. The other thing is in here, those threatened with eviction. Evictions have stopped per the governor's orders with the COVID-19 outbreak. If these tenants are at this point, how is this going to prevent the landlord from having to evict them after two more months? Because again, they're still going to be in arrears. The next question is, are we going to look at if these applicants have a history of essentially renting from a location, facing eviction, and then going to another location? and then going to another location and having the same thing happen again? Then also, will the recipients be given a W-2 showing that they received this money? Because again, this is income. And we know that the additional funding from the COVID-19 is being counted as income and they are subjected to having to pay taxes. So how will we be issuing essentially a W-2 to them to show that they've received these funds? The other question is, we've heard a lot about extended-stay hotels. Do they qualify as an apartment? So there's a lot of questions I have, and concerns.
Chairman, I will work with Mark Stagmire to get the answers from Commissioner Gamble.
Okay.
That's a pretty long list to kind of throw at me right now.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. Commissioner Cooper?
Thank you, Chairman. My sentiments again for this agenda item is similar to my sentiment for other ones. And it's also communicated in the email that I sent to the board on May 17, where I thanked Jackie for sending the StarC proposal. But I said I support us having a process similar to the food distribution program that we approved for emergency, for emergency food distribution. Cobb has a number of organizations that serve in emergency housing and housing stabilization. If we use a third party like WGN, we can ensure fairness and equity in the process. I spoke with a number of organizations that help provide food feedback on the food stabilization program. There's no evidence that we've reached out to multiple organizations to see how we should move forward in housing stabilization. I think this gets back to us awarding certain players and not making this an open process for others to be able to have consideration or like consideration for funding. Organizations like Sweetwater Mission, MUST, amongst many others, have been helping this county with food stabilization for several years. Did they have an opportunity to provide a proposal with respect to this that we can carefully measure with this program? I'm not saying this is not a good program. I think we should consider StarC. But I think we should also consider the many other players that have historically worked with the county in this area and do something comparable where we provided a, provided funding based on anyone who met the funding criteria. We gave them the opportunity to be able to get funding. We are not going to easily dig our way out of the housing impact with respect to COVID. This will be lingering and it's going to be painful. When people start losing their homes, this is going to be painful. I was listening to an NPR story about a woman who takes care of her grandchildren and how she's been getting notices to have to leave her apartment. She's not sure where she's going to go. She's not sure her children can take her in. There are multiple cases like this where we can have a lot of homeless people in our community. I think we should be responsive. But I think we should consider this, the impact of COVID on housing in its entirety and ensuring that we're not only addressing housing stabilization, which can come through helping tenants, but also emergency housing. CDBG is hoping to address this with some of the funding they receive. But we're for going to go outside of the parameters of the CDBG program to consider mechanisms like this. We have got to be fair to others who play in this space and have been continual partners with the county. I think it's unfair not to do that.
Ms. Chairman, no one is excluding any other organization. This was an unsolicited proposal that came to the county that addressed many of the needs that were discussed by the board in previous meetings. And there is nothing in this proposal that says other organizations that Commissioner talks about couldn't apply for a similar amount of money to do their program. So, I mean, to imply that this is excluding anyone else is totally inaccurate. That is not the intent here. This is simply a proposal on the table to address a concern that this board has been discussing for many, about a month and a half.
Chairman, this is not, it may not have been the intent, but it is the resultant impact. I assure you, from someone prominent in this arena in Cobb County, has reached out to me and said, this has not been fair to our Cobb County organizations. None of them, not all of them, or a lot of them did not know at any time they could submit a proposal and be put on an agenda with a drafted MOU. I think this is a result of a relationship that some, that an organization has with respect to a board member. And not even commissioners knew that if somebody reached out to them, that we can just put them forward for a MOU. We've always talked about sitting together and talking through this. This is again why I'm just a bit taken back to see MOUs brought on things that we know for broad concerns of this board that have yet to be discussed as a board. And while it is an issue that these organizations didn't know, it's still, there are other questions to be considered. As Kelly said, we have a lot of homes. I know in District 4, a lot of our single-family homes are utilized for rent. We have some districts where most of the rental properties are single-family homes. Will those be considered under this? So why should there be disparate impact for those landlords and those tenants versus these? There's also some other considerations towards housing instability. As Commissioner Gamble said, we have people living in hotels and have been living in our extended-stay hotels. Will this go towards their emergency housing? I mean, there's just so many ways to skin this cat that to put this forward without us having an open discussion and an open call for organizations that are in this space to address this, to me, I think is premature.
Okay, well, first of all, if we approve the categories, like Commissioner Ott said, other organizations can apply for funding within those categories. Second of all, the public has not seen the email that I sent to you last week explaining the, my thought process and why these two agenda items, 16 and 17, are on here. So again, you know, we're going to vote on these things. And if we get three votes or more, then we'll pass. If not, then they won't, and we'll move on.
Ms. Chairman, I have a couple of answers to some of the questions that were asked earlier.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
First thing, just as I let the board know, that StarC is actually headquartered in Cobb. Also, eviction court starts in June in Fulton, based on the governor's order. And they have over 1,000 cases filed. And Cobb is not that far off on those numbers. As to the W-2s, because StarC is a nonprofit, there would be no W-2s required. And part of the process that StarC follows, families have to show proof that they are stable with the deed, not just can't pay the rent.
Okay, all right. So let's go on to, let's go on to transportation now. And I'm going to start with Commissioner Ott, 16, or is that 18 through 25?
And I don't have any questions on the transportation agenda items.
Commissioner Gamble?
Yes, my only question is, is Cobb has determined the level of our participation under House Bill 930. So how could that potentially impact our comprehensive training going forward? Or planning, not training.
I'm sorry, I didn't get, I didn't get the question. You were cut out at the very start, Commissioner Gamble, so I missed the context of your question.
Okay, Cobb has not determined how we are going to participate in House Bill 930 if we're going to do regional transportation or if we're going to have it in specific districts. So how is that going to impact the comprehensive planning that they're looking to do? And if we do go to a regional or a district-type House Bill 930 plan, will that change the scope and increase our funding required?
Okay, so that question relates to number 18?
Yes.
Ms. Chairman, can I jump in on that? Having been the liaison for, you know, not this year, but the last two years, the thought process when this all moved forward and the initial contract with Kimberly Horn came forward was the idea that the 2050 plan was going to kind of be like the macro level, looking at what the county's needs might be based on the consultant's analysis of the county's needs. And then as House Bill 930 and House Bill 170 came about, if, depending on what direction the county chose with House Bill 930, because at the time, there were two options. You could have the small segmented area for the transit act, so you could do the whole county, or you could do MARTA. And so the thought process was with the 2050 plan to come up with some general guidelines as to what the county might need to help guide the board in deciding how to effectively use the House Bill 130, 170, the House Bill 930, and then any other options that might be out there.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Good, Chairman. Chairman, if I can, I have no other questions for the remainder of the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cooper, 18 through 25?
Likewise, I have no additional questions on this agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Burrell?
I don't have anything, thank you.
On the rest of the agenda?
No.
All right, so with that, I believe we've covered all the issues on the agenda book. And do I hear, I'm going to make a motion that we go into a second session?
Second.
A second, any discussion?
Yes, just would ask that we wait till at least 11:30 before we start.
I concur with that, Commissioner Cooper.
Okay.
So with that, all in favor, raise your right hand. This is 5 to 0, so we reconvene here at 11:30 after a short break.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you need to hang up, if everybody would hang up, different weather.
Different weather. We need to meet.